I'm going to get this started. This is a meeting of the City Council Maintenance and Development Subcommittee. And we are meeting today on an issue that Council Letterman and myself are very concerned and optimistic about with some of the new funding on the state street corridor and safety concerns. So I am joined by my colleague, City Councilor Jesse Letterman, who was a member of this committee, Chris Signoli, head of the Department of Public Works, Betsy Johnson, who has many titles. But I think, what are you here for?
The Walkbike Springfield, but also the Armory Quadrangle. It is sort of the joint issue of the neighborhood council as well as definitely Walkbike Springfield.
Oh, absolutely. So, you know, Chris, when we met previously, Council Letterman and myself had, you know, of course, everyone is still concerned about the crosswalks, State Street getting to the Central Library and so forth. But we had forward some interesting suggestions. And Jesse, I believe it was you who talked about a possible walkway. Wasn't that you? Yeah. So I think what we'd like to know, and I think I'll going to open it up to questions first. And then, you know, Chris, to address that, you know, with all this new funding and with monies going into projects that might have been previously covered by the budget, are there any new updates or suggestions or ideas for the State Street corridor? I know a previous meeting, we had talked about constituents had talked about painting the traffic lights. I don't know where that stands. And I know the Armory Quadrangle and Betsy and many concerned citizens have had many suggestions for and waited a long time for more safety on State Street. So do you want to make a comment, Jesse?
Sure. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Walsh. Yeah, the piece that I was most interested in was after our meeting earlier this year about the crossing between the library and the parking lot for the library and museums. Chris had indicated, you know, that they would take a look at some of the different options and perhaps not necessarily restoration of a crosswalk at its previous location, but at a location that DPW felt would be more appropriate for everybody. So I'm hopeful we can get an update on where things stand with that particular project.
And how about you, Betsy? Do you have a particular concern? I think you're muted.
Nope, unmute finally. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we, I know the speed detector was up for, but only for a super short time. And but wanted to still, you know, see if we could get some better documentation of just how fast cars come down that section of State Street. So, you know, want to be, and a lot of Jesse and I have all stairs. I know Chris has gotten a copy of the book that he's highlighted considerably and that the fellow with Strong Towns uses State Street and the child being killed as his, you know, core example of how things need to change, not just in Springfield, but around the entire country. And, you know, gives a lot of rebuttal to part, a whole chapter of the book is a rebuttal to that eight-page letter. So I don't know if you have had a chance to look at the book and see how others have responded to that. You know, I think we want to think more, even more totally out of the box. Does that need to be, you know, the entire length of four-lane, you know, four lanes of vehicle traffic? Can it be more pedestrian oriented, particularly since 95, we're going to be, 95 State Street is, and 310 State Street are going to become residential properties with close over, well, close to 100 new apartments in both of those. So we really do, we have a lot of concern that it's a resident, it is, needs to have more of a residential feel to it rather than being, you know, a throughway for the folks in, you know, in Long Meadow.
What's the name of the book?
It's called Confessions of a Recovering Engineer. It's by Charles Marone. I guess, is that Jesse, that how he pronounces his name?
I'm not completely sure.
Sure, okay. And it's transportation for a strong towns. He's the head of Strong Towns. He happened to be visiting Steve Schulz the night the child was killed.
Oh, no kidding.
Yeah. And then uses, you know, the State Street situation as, I mean, State Springfield is in every chapter of this book. And as
Well, we now have Chris Signoli's Christmas present.
He's already supposed, you've received, I mean, Chris, Steve Schulz said he was giving you the book, did he?
I used it for kindling.
Yeah, I'm afraid. I also gave the mayor a copy. I have no idea whether he's read it or not. Jesse has a copy.
Yeah, I'm going to look it up. So, Chris, I mean, from this meeting and other meetings, I'm sure you know what our main concerns are. And in some conversations we've had, is there light at the end of the tunnel on some of this?
What we are doing right now as a follow-up to the meeting that we had earlier this year.
Right.
Once July 1st happened, I was able to, we went through consultants, got a consultant. We are doing two pedestrian crossing studies. We are doing one on State Street and we are doing one on Plainfield Street. Plainfield Street by the McDonald's, there's an existing crosswalk that is there from St. George Church that there have been some issues with. So about three to four weeks ago, our consultant was given notice to proceed. We had to wait for approval from Mass DOT. We're using their money. So we got that approved. They are in the process right now of doing their studies. They are between eight and nine weeks total. So probably within the next four or five weeks, I will start to have concept stuff from them about both of the locations, what can and can't be done at each location, requirements and all that good stuff. At the same time, just from a traffic perspective, PVPC is doing a study on Page Boulevard at Berchem that I think they have started. If they haven't started, they're starting shortly. Their money is federal, so they had to wait till October 1st. So those three, once that one is done at Berchem, I'm not a big fan right this second of these warrant studies because I think traffic is still way down, traffic volumes are still way down. So one of the, one of the components is traffic volume. So I get a little nervous when we got to do some traffic counts right now. When that one is done, we will then be doing one just down the street at Brookdale. I want to wait to see what comes out of, out of Berchem, then we'll do the Brookdale one. So we're actually working on four major traffic issues, studies for pedestrian crossings and signalization in the city at those locations. Like I said, probably in the next three, four weeks, I'll start to have data back from the consultants, start looking at preliminary upgrades, location, if we're using State Street as an example, where we could put a crossing, what it would need to be. And I just wanted to, let's see if I can get lucky here and let's see. This just happens to be a copy of their scope that we're doing. They're going to be doing inventory vehicles, bikes, pedestrians, lighting, going through design hour volumes, the warrants, crash history, signal operations, and then looking at median refuge islands, rapid rectangular, rapid flashing beacons, hybrid beacons, street lightings, hawks. So we're going to be looking at all of those at each of those locations.
Could they, can they also look at whether, say, down the hill could be reduced to only three lanes on one side? And just something that would otherwise help slow down that traffic? I mean, we want the crossing, but we also just need to slow down that traffic.
Modification, modification of State Street right now, because in 2010 it was redone.
Right.
Cannot make any modifications to the roadway without going through the legislature.
I've been told differently on that.
I have to get legislative approval to modify design and design standards that were done as part of federal and state funds. And there was a plan back in 2014 that was actually looking at a bus rapid transit proposal for State Street.
I remember that.
The whole reason that project basically died is that it was going to require one lane in a lot of locations. And it basically turned the entire corridor into a F, level of service F at most of the major intersections and corridors along there as well. So that was one of the reasons why that died. They are not looking at the idea of, of, of major changes to the roadway. However, in the locations where they're looking at for the possible pedestrian crossing, they do have to, because it is a four-lane road, there would be a median, center median on there. So one of the items that they are looking at would be at the median area we're talking about is that there would be a lane modification.
Okay.
So not, we're not talking about the entire corridor, we're talking about a smaller section.
Well, no, no, and that's was I, that's my, that's, that's what I'm interested in as well. I do know that within two weeks supposedly, Mast dot is going to be coming out with new suggestion, new proposals related to speed, the whole 85% standard related to setting speed limits that are going to hopefully change and more move in the direction of becoming more pedestrian friendly. So I don't know. I mean, this doesn't, that may eventually change some of this whole, looking at some of these warrants.
Yeah, the 85 percentile for speed is really, just about every roadway in the city kills you when you start doing those studies because the speeds are so high. You know, even on a 30 mile an hour roadway, the speeds are so high. So it really does, it does hit you. And I know they've been nationally, it's been a petition for a long time to get that.
Well, and as I said, Mast dot, Jackie DeWolf is supposedly in charge of this. And it's said that she's coming out with her draft proposal.
Yeah.
Before the, at the end of the month.
I'm assuming that will end up having to go to federal highway, probably.
He said, when she was asked that, she didn't feel she, they needed to, that they could, they could change that, but we'll, we'll see.
Yeah.
So that was
Because I know where it will come back and be a little difficult for them is that when they do projects where they're using some of the federal money and if you kind of waiver from some of those federal guidelines. But that's, you know, that's, that should be an easy process if they want to do that change, so.
Yeah. Council Letterman, you got your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, this is, I think, very significant and welcome news relative to the library crossing. I mean, this is something in the neighborhood and, and folks have been bringing forward for many years. And so I'm encouraged to see that we've moved the dialogue here to, to an actual action item. I share your concern though on the timing of it. I guess I'm worried about the pedestrian number and the traffic number in terms of not necessarily being reflective of what we would see when we are fully back to normal. Is there a way that DOT adjusts for that or considers the pandemic sort of suppression of attendance and traffic in the study?
Yeah, my, my guess is, is what we've been doing in our discussions with DOT along the way have been, if we do say a study like this and it's a, I'm going to say borderline of whether you do something or you don't do it, they're erring on the side of doing it. And then as you move along, you know, if we're doing an intersection project, we then end up always having to do another traffic study along the way anyway. So what I'm seeing now is the traffic, traffic in general is back. But I'm going to say it's probably about 85% of what it used to be. It's, it's there at peak times, but in general, there's still a lot that's down a little bit. But on traffic studies that we've been doing, we've been adding percentages on there, looking at historical data. We have a lot of historical data, especially that State Street, Plainfield, Page Boulevard as an example, we do have a lot of historical data. So when numbers come in and we see them going down, we know that's not really the case.
Well, and I'd say the pedestrians are equally down.
Betsy, let Jesse finish his.
Sorry, Jesse.
Well, I was also going to say to consider what Betsy had said earlier about 95 state streets development because that will certainly be adding significant pedestrian traffic, especially considering that there's no parking on site there. So they're going to have to be walked wherever they park, they're going to be walking.
The, the plan is for the parking at 310 State Street, which is across the street.
Yeah.
And that's, see, that's, but
Chris, did you say you think you'll have some results from this? You said about four weeks?
Three, four, three, four weeks. I should start getting preliminary data, preliminary layout stuff from the consultants.
And then we can talk about the different options.
Yeah. And what I would suggest is when I start getting that, I can then contact catering so that we can schedule another meeting.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I was wondering about public participation. You know what, Chris? I'm wondering, those other locations you remember they're looking at, have there been fatalities there?
Um, on, on Berchem Street, at that intersection, there was a, about two years ago, there was a double fatality there.
Okay.
But that was the, it was a, I think a mother and a daughter. It was in a vehicle, four people in a vehicle. And the woman driving the car where the road bends, she went straight into oncoming traffic.
Oh dear.
And at the last minute, she turned the vehicle sideways and the side of the car was hit by a tractor trailer. So the woman and her daughter on that side of the car were killed. The difficulty, also the difficulty at that location is we have, we, we, with some of the speed, you have some sight distance issues. So we, once I start getting that data back, we, we're, you know, looking at things at, at Berchem that we can do in a interim standpoint, depending upon what's going on. Brookdale, there has not been one vehicle one. There was a pedestrian, actually a bicyclist that was killed there four years ago. That was a suicide.
No kidding.
At that location, yeah. The Plainfield Street, there was a pedestrian death, not at that location, but up farther where the ramp comes in. Somebody coming off the ramp was looking, if you're coming to get onto, off of 91, to go onto Plainfield Street towards Carew. Somebody was coming off the ramp, looked to the left to see if a vehicle was coming and didn't see a pedestrian coming from the right, which unfortunately happens way too typical with bicyclists sometimes. So the, each of those locations has had a, had an issue.
Okay. So what, what can be done that you, you wouldn't need to involve the, the state legislature?
Well, on, on State Street, when, when we do a project through, through the state process, through the tip, through state and federal funding.
Yeah.
In order to make modifications of that, we have to go back to Mass DOT. Mass DOT then has to make a request to the legislature to modify all of the approvals that were done as part of a project. I had to jump through a couple little hoops. I didn't have to do legislative stuff. But when we put in our application to use of Chapter 90 funding for this study, the question was asked, why are you looking at this now? Why didn't you look at it 10 years ago? We said, well, we did, but Mass DOT didn't approve any of the options that were presented at that point. So we're relooking at it again with different traffic volumes and if different pedestrian volumes as well. So they said, well, from a study standpoint, they really, they said, that's fine. If we were to get into design stuff, that's another step down the road.
But also their
I'm not worried about that at this point.
Their whole guidance related to complete streets has been issued within the last 10 years. Their whole outlook in terms of prioritization, the priority given to pedestrians and bicycles in relationship to vehicles has totally changed in the last 10 years. I mean, that's why they're doing things like relooking at this 85% rule. Because they've recognized, which is why I've gotten the message from them. When I've asked them, is this really, is, you know, do we really need, is this going to, are these approvals going to be a problem? They've told me, don't worry about it.
You just end up having to jump through a million hoops, that's all.
Yeah. So, so Chris, you know, new funding and new monies, how does that work into it? None of this that we're talking about would qualify for the American recovery, would it?
Most of it does not because in the, in the American Recovery Act, it doesn't, it talks more about utilities, especially water, stormwater, drainage, water, sewage, broadband, utility perspective. So it really doesn't. However, there is, you know, then we have separately, we have the transportation bill, if it ever gets there. And then separately from that is Chapter 90. There's big discussions, excuse me, going back to 2020, before the pandemic, both the governor and the House had agreed upon, right now, they had been doing 200 million statewide. They were looking at going at 300 million statewide, which the city of Springfield would have gone from 3.6 to about 5.4 million. Still not enough for paving, but it gives me a little leeway in doing certain, certain different projects. And then separately, anything that ends up in an infrastructure transportation bill is stuff that obviously we go after. Now, as I, I've said a million times on the transportation bond, I am nervous isn't even the right word, it's scared, is that when this federal money comes into the state, when it was done under the shovel-ready stuff in the late Obama administration, virtually zero of it came down to the municipalities. It was all sucked up by the state and state projects. And so I know my conversations with DOT and reps and senators has been, please, please, please make sure that this money comes down to the states or to the municipalities. Separately, the, the state government is looking at doing its own mini-transportation bill, not a bond, but a bill separately, that money would come down separately to the municipalities. And again, I get nervous that when stuff like that happens, you see things like the MBTA and Massport and stuff like that sucking up huge, huge, huge volumes of numbers. So we've been pushing it legislatively to make sure that there is some sort of formula that it goes down to the state, whether it's a Chapter 90 formula or something with that regards, that when money is distributed, it actually gets to the state, to the municipalities.
I was on a webinar this morning
That they remember where Springfield is.
Well, and I was on a webinar this morning that T, what an organization called T for Mass had, and a lot of conversation about how the regional transportation authorities need their fair share, not just the MBTA. And there was even a big article in the Globe lately on how Western Mass has been being short-changed with Chapter 90 money. And so a new awareness that the Chapter 90 money needs to help us, well, not just help the Springfields, but also the road population weak, but road length rich hill towns. So, so we can keep our fingers crossed and definitely, you know, we're, there's definitely a lot of, we're, we're staying, trying to stay on top of that and be part of that advocacy.
And, and if, on that too, Betsy, if I'm actually an advocate of having it not go to the regional transfer, you know, similar to the tip process.
Yeah.
I would, I would want it to kind of just come directly to the municipalities if the regional agencies become the kind of clearinghouse and Mass, Mass DOT is slightly involved. Mass Works grant process is fantastic. When we do roadway work, we get the money. Mass DOT kind of reviews it, but they, you know, they just kind of do an oversight and we get to move a lot quicker. I don't want to, you know, just, I'll use State Street as an example. Say we're going to do a million dollars worth of work on State Street. I don't want it to be a four and a half year process because that's what we're running into now. And what's even worse, the thing with the governor suspending and terminating employees is killing Mass DOT. We can't get anything reviewed there now. Stuff is taking four, five, six months just sitting there because they don't have enough employees. They can't hire, A, they can't hire, B, they're, most of them are working remotely. So I just want to make sure that when we get the money, if it can funnel down to us, and I know some people don't trust municipalities and I can, I know that argument, but I want to be able to get the stuff done as quickly as we can for a lot of different reasons. Obviously, you know, if somebody gives me $2 million for something, like I said, I don't know, wait two years, you know, for Mass DOT to do reviews on a simple project.
Well, and I heard we did have some good news about a Mass Works grant that hasn't been announced yet.
This is a great
I already got the letter.
It looks like we, we're joined on the phone, I believe, by Councilor Davila. Victor, are you there?
Hey, I'm Councilor Tom.
Oh, you are? Okay, all right. So you're, you're joining the development meeting. We're talking about safety issues, State Street and other places. Did you have some concerns or something you'd like to share with us?
Actually, I have a quick question. I've been listening to what Chris said. But if you know, this thing with the state where they're laying off employees and that has a potential to impact us. And I use, and, and I know usually when they keep, when we get money from the state, there's a timeline. Have they said anything of any kind of extension due to the shortage of state employees in any, any municipal project?
No, the, the issue that things are just taking longer and, you know, reviews and projects that are going on. There's probably four other projects in the city that actually the state is doing versus the designer working for the city, they're working for the state on a bunch of projects in the city. And I, things are just taking a lot longer. And the problem that I have with that is that when you start to get the bump up to fiscal years where projects are supposed to be going out to bid and you don't have approvals because I can't do land takings and easements until the 75% has been approved and then to move on. And, you know, you can't do, you gotta do A before B before C before D. And that's where we're going to start to run into problems. Now, a lot of the stuff we're doing right now at the state level doesn't have a lot of environmental. But, you know, a project like the X, you know, is just big, you know? So there's a lot of little stupid details in the whole project. So it just, it just takes forever on any sort of question, review, things like that. That are just, that's the thing that just drives me nuts. And what makes me, what makes me a little, what sprues things up even more is I have consultants that then sit around for a month doing nothing. And then all of a sudden you get an answer and then you ask the next question and now you got to sit around for a month. and then you ask the next question and now you gotta sit around for a month. And I always use the word that the design process becomes very constipated. For lack of a better term, it just is stop, start, stop, start, stop, start.
Right, right.
You lose flow, uh, in what you're trying to accomplish.
All right. So, so that I'm clear then, Chris, uh, do you don't foresee the city losing any money due to this shortage?
No, no.
All right. And I hope that the X project here, uh, which I know has been a hold for a while, doesn't get hopefully hold up any longer, because, uh, that's a good project for my district and for the city.
Yeah, we have, we, and I had mentioned to you before, Victor, I would love to have a uh, to, to, we are moving into the seventy-five percent on that. Uh, and as I mentioned a while back, I'd love to have a meeting so that we can go through. When we had the twenty-five percent, there were a lot of comments about various things. The trees with the road, the bike way, crossings, all of that stuff. And uh, we've gone through all of that. So sometime in the next month or two, probably be a good thing to go through the, uh, Civic Association.
Yeah, I'll email you, see what we can.
My, my, uh, my folks are, have been, um, I think, well, you even got an email from Sheila recently about that. So, uh, fe- folks are very anxious for that meeting.
Yeah, we've, and that's been a problem with Mass DOT, because we've been trying to get them to as I had said way, way, way back, it's like, I wanted to, we, we made a bunch of options and discussions, and if you do A, you know, if you keep the trees, that means the road's narrow. If the road's narrow, you gotta have lane, the lane's gotta be smaller. So it was like A before B before C. And I wanted to get Mass DOT, at least their tacit approval, if we were gonna do certain things that they, I didn't wanna propose something and have them come back at the end and go, no. So we got them, but that took year and a half to do that. So I think we're very comfortable now, and I think we have a good, good layout uh, in the area that we're now, we're saving a lot of trees and uh, they've, they've tried some stuff. So, Victor, I'll get in touch with you to set something up through the Civic Association.
No problem. Thank you, Chris, and thank you. Well done, check.
My preference is, my preference on that would be to do it live. Uh, I just, I, I hate doing big stuff on Zoom.
Okay.
I, I think people are comfortable enough with that.
Yeah.
Chris, a lot of this stuff you're talking about, how much of it would go back to the city council? Say, for example, the, uh, you know, the X, which has been controversial.
The X will, the X will come to the city council at the point where we need to do easements, land state, land takings. Uh, so that would be down the road. I don't think there are any other components. I don't think there are any components that need, uh, city council approval.
So, new out-of-the-box safety, uh, project at, on State Street, it would just happen?
Uh, well, no, it would depend, it would, A, it would depend on how we're doing it, meaning what's the money that we're doing it. Uh, am I using chapter ninety money? Am I using, is it a state project? It is a tip project? Is it infrastructure money? Is it city money? Each one of those then has a different requirement of what I have to do with the city council.
Okay. And, and how about the, the issue that was brought up, uh, maybe about a month ago about, uh, the, uh, traffic lights in Mason Square? Can you change the color?
Not without replacing all, as I mentioned at the meeting, not without replacing all of those signals. So that's, you know, that's a.
You mean, you mean every single in the city?
Well, at, at that, well, if you just pick that intersection,
Yeah.
there's probably eighteen, twenty heads at a couple thousand dollars apiece.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that money would have to come from where?
You don't know either?
No, I'm asking you.
Yeah, that's, that would be, you know, money we would have to find somewhere. And, you know, my, my issue with that is, those are in relative terms, relatively new signals, those were probably two thousand nine, ten, eleven when those were put in. You know, we probably have two hundred other intersections that are, you know, that have no background on them whatsoever, that are the old, old, old style. Uh, you know, so it's, it's one of those things, it's like, if you do it in one place, you should do it in others. We've already done a full replacement. I think we're probably ninety-nine percent done. That we've gone from eight inch traffic signals to twelve inch uh, throughout the entire city. Probably took us about five years uh, to do that, um, a requirement through the MUTCD. So we did that a lot, and that was mostly chapter ninety money that we did with that.
Okay. Um, well, I, I think this has been a very positive meeting, uh, Counselor. And I know, one, you know, one thing that's looking for money, one place that I know um, Andy Carr is looking for money is with the, um, uh, Safe Roots to School Infrastructure Grant, that you can change lights out within a two-mile radius of a given school. So, uh, he's focusing in around the Washington um, elementary school, cause that would basically capture, um, as many as, I think, seven to nine additional elementary and middle schools.
Yeah.
So, that could, two, and that could be up to two million dollars. It can cover a lot of uh, traffic lights.
Yeah, there is, there is one.
So he's looking, I, he's thinking, you know, we're talking with him about helping him with that grant.
Yeah, we've, we've been, Andy's been very, very successful on grants. Very, very successful. And the
He's been great.
The Safe Roots to School project that's underway right now for Rebecca Johnson, uh, that is, I wanna say it's like six hundred and fifty, something like that thousand. The only thing that gets a little weird on that is the state does it. We get awarded it, but it becomes a state design project, so they have the designer do it. And I always have arguments that, you know, we get these designers from the Boston area who don't know where Rebecca Johnson School is. Have no idea about Old Hill, Upper Hill, McKnight. You know, the neighborhood, they just look at a map and say, oh yeah, we do this intersection, this intersection, this intersection. So we're going through all of that design stuff with them now. The, uh, Safe Roots to School stuff, um, uh, we've probably, yeah, we, obviously what we're doing now is working very closely with schools because we wanna make sure any of those upgrades that may then, depending upon what we're doing or where we're making upgrade, may then kick in the need for a crossing guard. So we wanna make sure that we're not stepping on the schools that, hey, we're creating this wonderful place with a new crosswalk, but they can't supply a crossing guard. So we wanna make sure that we're not, that nothing ends up getting recommended or done. That's gonna cause some angst, uh, on the school side.
Well, and the problem again with the Rebecca Johnson is that the money to actually do the construction isn't till twenty, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
No, it's, it's, yeah. It's taken forever. Uh, Counselor Letterman, you have any more comments? Cause I think we've gotten good news. I'm, I think this has been a very positive meeting.
Madam Chair, I agree. Thank you so much for calling the meeting, Chris. Thank you for your work. I, I think we are headed in the right direction. And like I said, it's very welcome news. I hope that, uh, once we have the data in hand, we'll be able to push forward with, uh, some of what the neighborhood has been asking for for so long.
Yeah, and I hope we'll be able to, Chris, as you said, have meeting and, and share this with, uh, uh, people. So, you know, that's also very important. Betsy, thanks for everything that, that you do. And Victor, thanks for joining us. And, uh, I look forward to, uh, the results of your study. Now, just, yeah, now, Chris, Traffic Commission involved in any of this or beyond that?
Um, eventually they will be. If we were, whatever we would be implementing would end up having to get approved by the Traffic Commission.
Okay.
So then, then that would then end up going to the city council.
Okay, well, perfect. Well, I look forward to, uh, a lot of this stuff taking place. Happy to see this flow of money coming in. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today and, uh, let's see, we'll see you later. Thank you.
See you next time.
Chris, appreciate the input.